Public meeting to order, City of Peru County Council Chambers, June 5th, 2023 at 5:45 PM. First up is the hearing on amending schedule of rates and changes for service provided by the Municipal Electric Utility of Peru. And I don't see Mr. Chance here now, but what that is. Kurt, would you want to explain?
Yeah, that's just the normal quarterly tracker. That's the way that we adjust it. In this particular case, it looks like it went down .040285 per kilowatt hour. So just a normal quarterly adjustment.
Also, any comments from the audience? Seeing none, go on. Public hearing on $70,000 appropriation from public safe at Loet for equipping police vehicles with in-vehicle cameras. Chief?
Is this any project that we talked to you about two months ago? We decided to go with a monthly fee. Kurt says that Loet can afford it. It would be for five years. It'd be about $70,000 a year for five years, every year, where it would have to be budgeted. Kurt says the money's there to be able to do it. So funding shouldn't be a problem with the project. We probably won't see most of the stuff till next year because it's back order. But if we wait longer to sign the contract, if what we have expires at the end of the month, then it's probably just going to keep going up and up like it did with body cameras.
How long does that contract stay in place for that price?
It's five years.
Okay, sorry.
It will expire in May of 2028.
Any questions from the audience?
Kurt, do you see any, foresee any changes in Loet that, where we couldn't?
Not on the public safety Loet, no. The cash flow plan that Baker Tilly presented last year shows that same amount coming in every year. So, and there's a, there's a nice cushion in the account right now, so it shouldn't be a problem at all. That's why we moved it from ARP to the public safety Loet because there was, there was enough funds in there to be able to continue it for the future.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions from the audience? Seeing none, we'll move on. Public hearing on the $1 million expenditure from CEDAT fund for local match portion for Ready grant for the Broadway Landing project. Mr. Tid.
Again, this hearing is about the appropriation out of unappropriated CEDAT for $1 million to act as the local match, to match $1 million of state money to support a project that we put in for Ready 1.0 or the first round of Ready. The state approved the $2 million project for us to extend water and sewer roadways and roadway into the area that we're calling Broadway Landing, which again is North Broadway, 66 acre site behind Dairy Queen Big R, all the way up to pretty much Prairie Ditch. And so this project would help stimulate growth in that area. And we've had, we have that area targeted for additional shopping, a new hotel. We're completing a healthcare study on possibly a new medical facility.
That's still going, that healthcare stuff?
Healthcare study is still, still underway, yes. And other types of retail, retail development, also housing. That area was identified as one of the areas that we're looking at potentially as a part of the housing study for new single-family homes. That would not be on the north end, but would be more on the south end of that 66 acre site. So be happy to answer any questions anybody might have.
That was my question with email this morning is I hadn't heard much about the potential of a medical facility moving in there, so, and that was a question I'd received, so.
Well, again, Kathleen, I'm not here to say 100% that that's going to happen, but I can tell you that. Critical part of any development is having water and sewer and roadways.
And I completely agree with that.
Into a development area. So, and that's what this project would allow us to accommodate.
Right. I just hadn't heard anything of the health study.
It's still in the last, wrapping up with Blue and Company, which is a CPA firm that's finishing up.
Any questions from the audience? Jim?
Usually when I've been to other city council meetings at other cities, the roads and the sewer and all that stuff are done by the developer. And, you know, in this situation, I'm not sure, because essentially, once that land gets sold, the developer gets the money. So.
Yeah, we're focused, so.
Well, I'm just, I'm just wondering why we're not doing something different where the city's not having to put that money up. Because for instance, where I'm from, the most expensive Walmart ever built was built there. They had to redo the freeway off-ramp and all the roads and all that kind of stuff. And that's why it cost them so much. City didn't put a dime in for it. Why are, why are we doing that?
Well, for one, we're not developing, we're not putting water and sewer and roadways into the old development, into the old 66 acres. Primarily, we're just extending a stub about 300 feet into, from off Broadway Landing.
So that's, then from there on?
From there on, we'll be up to the developer who extend that water and sewer throughout that 66 acres and do that roadway development.
All right. Just curious about that.
Yeah. Right now, we're trying to show that area, show something there other than a field. And being able to at least have an entryway into the development area, then water and sewer stung in, we think will be beneficial for our.
So is it going to, the entrance next is going to be there on Broadway?
Yes, ma'am. It'll be right across the street from where Roxy Lane is now, so that'll be actually become a four-way intersection in the future. And then, so what will happen is the development that's happened now on Broadway, like where Taco John's and where First Farmers, the agreement that we had with them is once we get the, because part of this is a roadway behind their development, part of this project, kind of like a rear frontage road, per se. So once we get that road built, they'll vacate their current entry on and off of Broadway because that way we can control most of the development at that one intersection.
So is, have they done, I assume, some traffic studies and stuff like that for that type of traffic and stuff?
Yes, we've taken that. That's been all done preliminary engineering to come up with that $2 million.
Because there's so much accidents up there already, it seems like it would be a big concern.
And eventually, we'll probably look at if we do, especially if we get a huge medical facility there, which is our hope, and maybe a hotel and some other shopping. Kansas Ark would have to put a traffic signal there.
I was going to ask about that too, yeah, because it seems like it would need it there.
But that would be in the, in the future.
Right. So basically, you're just talking about moving from Broadway, inserting it into the hill.
Yeah, if you look at where that area is, there's a vacant field between Dairy Queen and Taco John's.
It's going to go through there.
It's going to go straight through there, about 300 feet back. There'll be a rear frontage road that will go behind Taco John's and where First Farmers' commercial, or the bank is now. And then water and sewer will be stuffed in for that area.
So it's just going to be like a dead end behind there right now?
And that's what it'll be as well, is that, that roadway entrance will just stub in to be a dead end.
It's just like an L.
With a cul-de-sac so people can turn around and come back out.
Gotcha.
But people get the feeling of what the.
Jim, will the businesses be responsible, build their own entrance once this road goes in back there? Or is that part of?
Yeah, they will, the future roads that will come off of, where's building?
No, I mean, the ones that are already there. Taco John's and the bank and everything, will they have to build their own entrance from the back?
Yeah, and they've, they've kind of allowed for that.
Okay.
Now, I know at least the bank is.
Any other questions? Seeing, thank you. Seeing none, we'll move on. Public hearing on expenditures from the ARP fund in the amount of $886,891.
You have a list in your packets there of, we asked all the departments to provide a list of requested amounts. And then we had subsequent meeting and the, the agreed upon amounts are in the adjusted account. We had approximately ARP, we have $1,750, something like that. And we decided that we would spend half this year, allocate half this year, and leave half for the next, for the next administration. According to the U.S. Department of Treasury, funds must be obligated by December 31st of 2024 and expended by December 31st of 2026. So this is a good start. And if the new administration then has that same amount next year, then they can decide what they want to spend it on. And they've got until 2026 to actually, actually cut the checks.
Did you get estimates on the departments?
Everybody gave me, yeah, they gave me, everybody gave me estimates.
Quotes and votes?
Yes.
Good, okay. We didn't get those.
I've got them if you want to come see them. I, what I, what they gave me is right on your paper.
Yeah, I'd kind of like to see those because I think that's, can you email those or?
Well, you, you know, the, once again, these are, these are the best quotes, the best estimates. If it, if it's $100 or $1,000 one way or the other, then that's, that's okay.
But the thing is, is when I pay my bills, I, you know, before I pay a bill.
We're not going to pay the bills until, until we get the actual bill. But these are the best estimates as of the present time.
But I, but I haven't seen them, so I, I mean.
You're basically going to allocate the bulk of the money. Then how, then this is how the individual departments want to, want to, want to divide it up, so.
I understand that. I just haven't seen, I mean, it's just for my sake, for me to be, you know, accountable for my vote, I'd kind of like to see the estimates.
Okay.
TV, put your phone on charge.
Okay, right now, I'm going to call point of order because this is a public meeting. We can discuss this during the regular council meeting. For any of the councilmen that have questions, this is a question answering period for the
So I should ask questions?
I have a question that's comparable to what Councilwoman Plotho asked. When you do budgets, there should be something that the budget is based upon. So when the department heads were sending it, were they saying, okay, I know we have to buy tires, the tires at this place are generally this amount, so this is what we're budgeting for? Or how do they come up with the budget numbers that they're talking about or the money that they need for that?
They went out and got, here's a quote for the workover at the, yeah, the House on Riverside.
Civic Center.
There's 37, there's 3607. Here's one other one for 4200. Here's one for the, another one's for the Civic Center, the rubber roofs right here. Here is a quote for the Chevy Silverado, $41,665.
So, so Mr. Croft, what you're saying is they did supply?
Yeah, I, they, they sent me these. I compiled the list.
Thank you, sir.
I will say, for everything that's listed, we have had quotes on. For those that's not listed, we have not received quotes for. Correct?
Correct. Everything has a, everything corresponds to that list I presented to the city council.
Any other questions in public?
Yeah, I have a question. So how do we know that they're not, who determines whether they're frivolous, you know, or, you know, these are expenses or estimated expenses that they submit? How will, who determines if they're?
All the department heads got together and we decided the, the priority on which ones need to be done first. And then that's why we're leaving the money for next year. The, the more critical ones got to be done first. We have eight, eight air conditioning and heating units that need to be replaced in the city hall. And they discussed them last year, they put them on hold, now they need to be done. They're, they're, they're 40 years old. We have our local maintenance guy that works for the city, takes care of it. He can do them himself, save the city money rather than going out and having a, an outside contractor do them.
Thank you. I was just curious of the process.
No, they were, they, the, the fire department needs, and on your list, they needed an extra $12,000, I think. I can't remember exactly what it was. But the, the new fire truck that we ordered came in a little higher than we, than we issued the bond for last year. We've got a Chevy Silverado with 72,000 miles, which is the fire department's main vehicle. It's experiencing ongoing transmission problems. It's got 72,000 miles on it, so we got a new quote for them.
The last meeting we had with the department heads, they prioritized the things that they were asking for on there. And then we went through the list and we made a lot of cuts.
Okay, that's what I wanted to hear.
Anything else in the public? Seeing none, I'll close the public meeting portion of this. Common Council, Peru City, June 5th, 2023 at 6:02 PM. Fledgely allegiance will be done by Pete. Remain standing for Pastor Brent wedding and no invocation.
United States of America. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for your goodness and your mercy. We pray that you would bless our elected officials in this city, that you would give them wisdom and guidance to govern our city and to make wise choices. We pray for our civil servants, those that serve this city in any capacity, that you would bless them, protect them, keep your hand upon them. Lord, we pray that you would bless this city and bring in jobs and businesses that will bless the citizens of this city. And we pray, Lord, for this council meeting tonight, that you would let there be peace and wisdom that would rule in this place, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Roll call.
Anderson.
Here.
Guston.
Here.
Plotho.
Here.
Ramsey.
Here.
Russell.
Ty Duschny.
Here.
Wolf.
Here.
Reading and correction to journal amendments to the last regular meeting on May 1st, 2023.
I'll make a motion, we dispense with the rules and accept the minutes, minutes as written.
Roll call.
Anderson.
Yes.
Guston.
Yes.
Plotho.
Yes.
Ramsey.
Yes.
Russell.
Ty Duschny.
Yes.
Wolf.
Yes.
Okay, moving right along, we'll start with council liaison communications. Tom, we'll start with you first.
I just have one thing. Ron Dash came to the solid waste district and told us of the situation that we're running into with the downtown site and the problems that we're having with it. And he has assured us that he's taking care of the situation. So I think that's great. He's on the ball. That's all I have.
All I got is about a year ago, I went to the park board to request permission to put in some sand volleyball courts. And we're finally getting them started. Thanks to Josh with the utilities for giving us the post. Kokomo gravel donated 18 tracks of loads of the sand. So hopefully here in the next few weeks, you start seeing them go up.
Steve, where's in that?
Right next to the skate park.
A couple of things from the Miami County Council from May 16th. Main point here, rainy day construction, courthouse construction was set at 151,132, mainly for new roof and windows. The Board of Works meeting of May 16th. The Peru Police Department has hired Colby Crow as a new probationary, probationary officer as of May 30th. And Peru Police Department also wants requested to change the status of Andrew Doherty from probationary officer to full-time status. And Peru Fire Department reporting on the resignation of firefighter Evan Kaufman. That's all I have.
The Parks Board, we've been, anybody that's been on Facebook, have noticed that we're getting an uptick in, in our surge of vandalism and, and inappropriate behavior. That always comes on in the summertime, and I think that some of it's, you know, warranted and some of it has been, anyway, that was going to be an opinion. But we met Thursday with Sofianos, Chief Sofianos, Cliff, Gary, Allison, and members of the Parks Board were invited, but some couldn't attend. We, there's a discussion being had to, to refine some ordinances and look at potential codes being written, like other cities have done, to ban people who have, who are caught destroying parts of the, the park system. But those are, we've just got to give our, our law enforcement officers teeth, you know, to, and guidance as to how, what they do. Because right now, the Parks Board, Parks are, one time here is different than this park. And if we're going to have the pickleball courts open, we can't say that the Miami sports off. So this is one thing that we'll continue to work through this week and with this done. And anyway, there's progress being made and really thankful for Chief Sofianos and Allison Paul and Cliff and Gary. So we'll hear more about that soon. That's all I have.
Executive Council Troy saw him today, and they've got five dogs up there, still looking for its owner. And we talk about so many dogs being wanting owners. Well, the scratching poach, which is moving to South Miami streets, got quite a few cats, like 180. And so cats are looking for homes. German Street, there's a 36-inch pipe that needs to be in there instead of a 12-inch pipe. Correct, Mr. Chance?
Correct, sir.
And that's been like that for at least 20 years or so.
When the county decided, or the, there was way before me, and the city, when the city was in charge of stormwater, the county and the city come up with a deal up there in the armory, I believe. And they weren't paying a stormwater fee. I don't, I don't know how exactly that came about, but there was an agreement that they would put in that drainage there, and they just put in something that was too small. Because that's not what they do really when it comes to like city-type drainage.
I mean, I know it's going to take some time to get it done.
Well, and in one of the ARPA funds, we could, one of the ARPA requests, we can talk about here when that comes up about, that's included, that'll be included in that project.
Of course, then up there at the golf course, Mr. Clark, I saw him a few minutes ago. He must have went in and out. But, oh, there he is. He's just waiting for some, you know, some prices on some things before he can come to us at this particular time. So that's basically all I got.
Okay. I'd like to report on the Civic Center Committee. We have an event this coming Sunday on 6/11. It's during the free concert in the park. We are having vendors there from 2:00 to 8:00 o'clock. And I think you can still, it's not too late to sign up to be a vendor, right, back up? And then we also like to welcome Josh Yoder. He's going to be a new member of our Civic Center Committee. So he, hopefully he can come to the next Civic Center meeting. And that's all I have.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor Hewitt, and as a request for the Parks Board, I'd like to make an amendment to the, to the agenda to add Gary Clark and the Parks Board, Cliff Hely, to be added to the agenda.
That'll, that would, that will be at the end of the, after the communications.
Right.
At the end of the, we'll add it at the end.
Okay, right before the communications?
Right, during the communications.
Before communications, okay. Can we, we can add it in the, before the communications though?
We'll get it at the end of the meeting, yes.
Okay, thank you.
He doesn't have any money to talk about, so.
Yeah, he does.
He didn't Friday.
Yeah, that's, yeah, yeah, I, yeah, we need to be on the agenda. That's why I make a motion. Can I, I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda.
We will at the, after we get the current agenda done, then we can add it.
Okay.
That's what I'm trying to say.
Okay, I understand you. Thank you.
All right, moving on, unfinished business. Seeing none, new business.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I do have a request for change to the agenda also.
We will add that after the current.
Okay, but I'm just making a request, so.
New business. Resolution number 12. Resolution establishing rate tracking factor for the municipal utilities, City of Peru, Indiana, for the third quarter of 2023.
I'll make a motion to consider resolution number 12, 2023.
Roll call.
Anderson.
Yes.
Guston.
Yes.
Plotho.
Yes.
Ramsey.
Yes.
Russell.
Ty Duschny.
Yes.
Wolf.
Yes.
Howdy. Well, you know, last month, when you guys approved the rate increase for, that wasn't energy-related, I said I'd be back and it might be more bad news. Well, I'm wrong. I was wrong, thank goodness. It's not great news, but, so the, the tracking factor for the residential will decrease from .004 to .001 per kilowatt. It's not a lot, it's about 50 cents per 1,000 kilowatts, but it's not 50 cents more, right? So also, the commercial and industrial will, will reduce by about, from .004 to .02, 002 and .003, .03 to .006. So decent news, not great, but we'll take what we can get. And that puts us Duke, Duke Energy, well, we are at 1,000 kilowatts on the residential side, 129.19. That's with the June rate that went into effect and this tracker here. And that includes the April tracker. And then Duke Energy is 178, that's 38% higher. Heartland RMC is 150, and that's 16.4% higher. And Miami CAS is 144, which is 11.89% higher. So still competitive and a little bit of a decrease, so. Any questions? Thank you.
Any questions from the audience?
Thanks, Josh.
I'll make a motion to adopt resolution number 12, 2023.
Roll call.
Anderson.
Yes.
Guston.
Yes.
Plotho.
Yes.
Ramsey.
Yes.
Russell.
Ty Duschny.
Yes.
Wolf.
Yes.
Okay, moving on, resolution number 13. An appropriation from the ARP fund, City of Peru, Indiana, amount of $886,891.
I'll make a motion to consider resolution number 13, 2023.
Second.
Second.
Anderson?
Yes.
Guston?
Yes.
Plotho?
Yes.
Ramsey?
Yes.
Russell? Sai Dashni?
Yes.
Wolf.
Yes.
Here are the papers that I got from the individual people. If not there is the Street Department, that was on the list that Baker Telly prepared last year with the Provo Capital Improvement Plan.
Right.
They had two trucks, and we're going to have them once. The quotes from the individual people are right there.
I had a couple of questions. My first question is about the heating and cooling units.
Mm-hmm.
When were the last ones?
They're 40 years old.
Forty years old?
The ones in the building, 40 years old. You can ask, you can ask the chief about the temperature control in the Police Department. There is none.
We only have, I think, three or four units that work, like eight or nine.
If I'm not mistaken, aren't they original to the building?
They have. There have been one or two new ones replaced over the years. They've rebuilt a couple of them. It's never worked when they rebuild them. They've even robbed all the ones off the basement at one point in time, bring them up. They need replaced. The ones that are running are pretty much band-aided together. Some of them have the compressors out, some have the circuit boards out of them, some have blow motors out of them. The two rooms right on the other side of there are normally 75, 80 degrees. It's extremely hot. Neither one of them work. So, it's designed where if one goes down, you can kind of get by with the other units, but we have so many down in the Police Department that we can't load the air around it to compensate. But no but to the council room, you open the door, it's all his office.
Dustin, I have a question. Maybe Kurt has the answer. Is there a point, a dollar point, where we are required to get multiple bids, or is that up to the discretion of whomever?
I mean, there's some bidding requirements under the Indiana code. At least as far as the bid provided there, I don't think any of those meet those public requirements. I think they're all under that threshold.
The one for the City Hall, specifically, Fitz went out and got two quotes, and then he found out he could do it himself. He used to work for those people, so he said, "I can do it on my time," and it's an eight-to-12 week window to get the, to get the parts, but they should be corrected by the time it's time for heat.
That, and if I'm not mistaken, the bid that come in, we didn't buy all eight with him putting them in for less than one would cost on the bid that came in, I'm sure.
That's for the heating cooling?
Pardon?
That's for the heating cooling, is that?
Yes.
Great. That's, I know come August, we're gonna, if we don't get new something in, we'll be feeling that, won't we?
And the one for the utilities is basically mandatory. Josh, you want to talk about that?
Yes, they've got it up there. So, that's part of the long-term control plan that we haven't fully got funded yet or engineered completely done. So, we, Locke Mueller is our engineer. They're our contracted engineer, so we, we don't have to bid that out per se, because we've already contract, bid the contract, bid the engineering out and everything, so they're our contracted engineer. These are the costs for them to completely engineer the south side separation, so separating all of the wastewater facilities from the stormwater. This is not lining on the south side or anything, but this is, this is engineering for, this is the cheaper portion of the engineering. The rest of the engineering will be around $7 million for the storage project, the $100 million portion of the project. But, so this is the engineering, so we can attempt to start getting funding for the actual separation part. And I believe, let's see, I have it in front of me here. So, we did the surveying and everything, and that was $70,000. The stormwater department funded that through their capital improvements plan, and the engineering itself will add another two, an additional $248,900 for that, and we're requesting half of that. And then we'll fund the rest, the other half, through money we've set back since we paid off the wastewater bond over 20 years. And we just paid that off in January. We made our last payment in January. So, that gives us a little bit of leeway there. And we want to start that right away, the engineering right away, so we can get it to the state for funding. And that does include the separation, and we'll fix the problem at German Street.
When they had originally given, when, when the police had originally given us the quote, it included the cameras for in the cars. And when we did the discussion, we were able to move that $300,000 from ARP over to the Public Lowit Fund, so that it freed up money for projects like these. So, we added a little bit more money for the cameras around the city and also at the parks, where we've had a number, a lot of vandalism lately.
Right.
And Chief Sofianos said it was originally the number we had there, but we increased a little bit. Prices change all the time, so we wanted to make sure we could get the, we could get the city taken care of. And you want to, Dustin, you want to mention what you said about?
Thank you, Josh.
Yeah.
Privacy? You were talking to me?
Certainly. Supreme Court has pretty early upheld that a person does not have any reasonable expectation of privacy while in the public. I mean, now, obviously, that's important to you while you're in your own home, but if you're out walking the road, there's specific case law that states that you should expect to be recorded or be subject to video recording, at least especially as technology advances. Traffic cameras, ATM machines, security footage, security camera of gas stations, everywhere you go, you're... Thank Kathleen, to answer your question, specifically purchases under $50,000 do not require bids or quotes, 150,000 to 150,000, required quotes, which you just go out and three people you know that works in that business or sells that product, get a quote from them. But if it's $150,000 or more, then you usually go and invite actual sealed bids, competitive bids.
So, so in-car, in-car cameras, that's going to?
The in-car cameras are in Public Safety Lowit, and he's got the, you know, he's got the bids for...
But does that still have to be?
You can't bid other companies, because it's all part of the same package, as far as body cameras, tasers, it's all designed to best together. And once you decide what company you're going with, that's who you're going with.
It'd be impractical.
Stuff's not designed to interact with other companies.
Chief, your taser deploy, is it automatically starts recording everything, correct?
Right. We pull our firearms, starts recording, it activates the car, activates body camera. It's all designed to work together.
Betsy, do you see on the Street Department one, if they got multiple bids for those, the plow trucks? Is anybody from the Aviation Department here, airport?
Yes.
Chris, would you mind coming up for a minute, please?
Sure. I'm not prepared with anything, but I'm here.
You want, you're requesting?
That didn't pass muster, Kathleen, if you look at it.
I beg your pardon?
The ones for Aviation is not, is not on this list.
Thank you very much. It didn't pass?
No, it didn't pass the first screen, it passed, didn't pass the first screening.
Thank you. That, that, yes. I wasn't paying attention to that. Thank you. I appreciate you being here. See you at Legends later this week, maybe, huh? Thank you. Thank you, Kurt, for explaining that to me.
Mm-hmm.
Not too much of the trucks.
Kurt, do you recall the estimates for the plows for the Street Department? Have you received estimates?
He, he called me and told me two of them at 150,000 a piece, and so we said one. So, he'll get, he'll get, because of the dollar amount, he will get quotes for those.
And I know after working with Adam, for every truck he's bought, he's called around all over to try to get the best price, whether he actually sends a quote back, but he can verbally say, "What do these trucks cost?" Not have to waste their time to send an estimate. But he's definitely trying to get as cheap as he can, so he can get multiple vehicles.
He's always really good about, about that kind of thing, and he overthinks everything and does a good job, so I have no doubt.
Do we have any more answers, or any more questions, I mean?
Just with the, nope. Nope, I don't. I was going to ask one, but...
Questions from the audience?
How many trucks were approved for the Street Department?
How many this, this round? One this time. We still got eight, we still got 880,000 for next year.
Okay.
So, do, we'll do one at a time. We had, by approving these things, you've got the Animal Control Center done. You've got the Civic Center totally done. The Police Department is, should be happy. The Fire Department's got a new truck. They've got the new fire, they've got the new fire station, and they've got the, the new ladder truck. So, they should, they should be, so we can concentrate on other, other things. We're trying to get the most imperative at the moment taken care of, and that's what we're doing.
Rebecca, would you mind coming up for a moment, please? With these, with these appropriations, are you going to be, feel okay about the Civic Center for a little bit?
Yes. So, we're asking for the roof repair. We have a lot of shingles missing. I mean, it's, it's bad. We tried to turn it into insurance, but because we were, we knew we needed a new roof, the insurance adjuster went up, and he said the rubber roof is, he can't believe it's not leaking yet. If it starts to leak, insurance won't cover it for anything, because we are aware that they need replaced. So, this is going to put the new roof on the garage, which we have decking exposed. The garage needs tuck pointed. We've lost one of the corners of the garage. The brick's completely fallen out. So, that needs tuck pointed. We're going to do the rubber roofs, the main roof on the house, and some appliances that need to be replaced. So, that's what we're asking for. Do you have any questions about the Building Department? I can ask that, I can answer that, too.
Don't. I don't.
Okay.
I move we adopt resolution 13, 2023.
Second. Roll call.
Anderson?
Yes.
Guston?
Yes.
Plotho?
Yes.
Ramsey?
Yes.
Russell?
Sai Dashni?
Yes.
Wolf.
Yes.
All right, moving right along. Resolution number 14. An appropriation from Public Safety Lowit to purchase in-vehicle cameras for the Police Department in the amount of $70,000.
I'll make a motion to consider resolution number 14, 2023.
Second.
Anderson?
Yes.
Guston?
Yes.
Plotho?
Yes.
Ramsey?
Yes.
Russell?
Sai Dashni?
Yes.
Wolf.
Yes.
Do we have any questions? This is basically what we talked about two months ago. We just decided to go by the month, though we're paying it all upfront. Keeps from using the ARP money, and Lowit can afford it. We'll be able to sign the contract this month if it's approved. The equipment probably won't be here till end of the year next year. We don't make a payment until the equipment is here, so when it comes is when we'll actually spend the money. So, it could, by all means, not even be spent this year, where it's appropriated and it's not spent until it's budgeted this summer to be used. But the funding's got to be in place to be able to sign the contract.
And you really feel like we definitely need this in addition to the body cam?
Yeah, this year, we've already had... I'll tell you how many traffic stops we've had this year. This year, we already had 499 tickets, 605 warnings, 1,569 traffic stops that were verbal warnings, 167 traffic crashes. We've had 6,350 calls, 262 arrests, where most of that stuff would have been videotaped on a daily basis. We're transporting people to the jail, all the traffic stops. You never know when something bad's going to happen. And it's just another preventative measure. The attorneys like it, the prosecutor likes it. It makes it easier to build a case with video. The video doesn't get everything, just as the body camera doesn't get everything, but it closes a lot of holes.
And do they have these in all their vehicles in Kokomo?
Kokomo only has body cameras. They have very, very little equipment in their cars. Our cars are pretty well-equipped, but we're a small department. We don't have any other divisions to call. It's today. Three guys are out there on the street. They have to handle everything that pretty much comes their way until somebody else comes in. That, you know, we don't have a SWAT team. We don't have a DUI team. We don't have a traffic enforcement team. We're well-rounded, and every officer is required to do every aspect of the job of patrol. So, it will just help make their job a little bit easier.
Any other questions? Any questions from the audience?
I'll make a motion to adopt resolution 14, 2023.
Second. Roll call.
Anderson?
Yes.
Guston?
Yes.
Plotho?
Yes.
Ramsey?
Yes.
Russell?
Sai Dashni?
Yes.
Wolf.
Yes.
Okay, moving right along. Resolution number 15. An appropriation of $1 million from the SEDAT fund as a local match for the City of Peru, Indiana, to fund infrastructure improvements for the Broadway Landing Project.
I'll make a motion to consider resolution number 15, 2023.
Second. Roll call.
Anderson?
Yes.
Guston?
Yes.
Plotho?
Yes.
Ramsey?
Yes.
Russell?
Sai Dashni?
Yes.
Wolf.
Yes.
Again, one thing that I did not include in the infrastructure when I was up for the public meeting, this project does also include stormwater along the roadways. I did provide another copy of the map that I gave last meeting, or concept drawing, not map, to show you kind of the proposed concept for the road improvements and where water and sewer and such would be laid. There is also a budget. Now, this is the initial engineer's cost estimate that's attached to the back. So, again, would be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
I just have a question for Kurt. Kurt, how much will we have left in SEDAT after this million's taken out?
Well, let's see here. We have approximately, we will have $2 million left.
$2 million left.
After this, after we, if we appropriate this?
If we appropriate 1 million, we'll have 2 million left. And according to the work Baker Telly did last year with cash flow statements, the SEDAT fund should be fine after this. I think you saw, you might have seen them last year when they had meetings.
Right.
Right.
Any other questions?
I just know, Betsy, we had talked about maybe doing it half this year and half next. I don't know if there's any benefit, or...
When's the money due, Jim?
Well, we would probably, assuming, once we get the release from the state and the commitment on the local match, we'll probably go out to final engineering, working with Peru Utilities, put the bids back together, probably start in August, September.
All the money won't be expended this year, though, would it?
No.
Aren't you gonna, aren't you gonna expend it as you go?
Yes, we are. So it probably will not be expended all this year, but the way they have set up the funding is that we would become the owner of the project, so the money would get, hopefully deposited in our account. We've got a separate ready...
Hopefully.
Ready accounting system, or a ready account set up, because otherwise we have to track expenditures, local match, state match, those kind of things. So I, I don't, I mean, it would be nice to have it all, whether we just drew 500 this year, but go ahead and do the appropriation for the full, and just maybe we'd only draw out 500, or if we can get the check cut for 500 this year, and then come back next year for the additional, but you would have to then re-obligate that money at the end of this calendar year.
About, about a year and a half or two years ago, I wouldn't have had any problem cutting you the check for the whole amount now, but interest rates being what they are, it's profitable for the city to keep the money in our account as long as we could, so.
So you're advising or recommending going half and half? Would that be best?
Well, we've got, we've got to commit for, for the million, for the, for the ready, but we don't have to, actually have to cut the check, is what I'm saying.
Okay.
For the whole amount.
So this, what you, what you've given us today, this is pretty much the estimate of what this project is gonna cost.
That's the engineer's estimate showing the breakout, and I know you're probably gonna ask me, well, that shows 2.3 million.
That's not gonna be my question, because I mean...
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
It's okay, I have other, no, I'm, no, but go ahead and answer that question, though.
No, well, what we'll do, that's the engineer's estimate, so we'll finalize the drawings, the bid estimate, put it out for bid, but you also notice in there's like almost a $450,000 contingency, which I think is high. So we can, through value engineering and, and doing some, some changes and working with contingency, I think we can get it down within the $2 million figure.
Where does this put our sidewalks, going from this spot to, to, all the way out?
There would be sidewalks that would be put into the area, but it doesn't include any sidewalks out in, in front along Broadway, not with this project. It would provide for them to go into the area, but does not include...
But for Broadway...
Now, if we lined up with extra funds, we can look at sidewalks and doing that, but we have to wait and see what the bids come in. We could also, we could put that in as alternates for the bid to include sidewalks, at least on one side, at least on the Broadway Landing side of Broadway Street.
I would like to see that, because I don't know where we are with ADA compliancy, if this is gonna affect these changes.
But it would all boil down to how the bids come in, and if we have dollars that we can elect certain alternates.
Well, any construction of sidewalks and stuff would have to be ADA compliant.
I'm sorry?
Any new construction, any new sidewalks would have to be ADA compliant, so it doesn't affect...
Right, but, but the North Broadway doesn't have, there are no sidewalks on, on the full North Broadway.
If we ever put sidewalks in on North Broadway specifically, they'd have to be ADA compliant, but meanwhile, they...
If all we can do is the sidewalks going in the main entryway, those will be ADA compliant.
Right, and I understand that part.
So when we do the sidewalks out on the main street, those will already be compliant.
Yeah, this, what I'm considering, what I'm thinking about is, is probably a different, different, a whole different project, but the sidewalks, I think, one of these days...
You're referring to the complete streets. The complete streets program to where the whole community is ADA accessible. I think that's what the program you're referring to to meet state compliance.
Right, well, it's just ADA compliant, legal, you know.
Okay, I'll, I'll make a motion we adopt resolution number 152023.
Second. Thank you, Jim.
Roll call.
Anderson?
Yes.
Guston?
Yes.
Plotho?
Yes.
Ramsey?
Yes.
Russell? Sai Dashni?
Yes.
Wolf?
Yes.
Go back to the sidewalks for a second. You do have $50,000 in the city budget that you approved last year for sidewalks, and normally it's, it's for matching, replacing in front of homes. If it isn't spent for those, I don't know why it couldn't be spent for, for them, so.
All right.
There already is money in the city budget in the amount of $50,000.
Kurt, I cannot thank you enough for being, having the information when not even asked, so thank you.
Well, that's what I'm, that's, that's what my job description is, so.
Do we need to amend the agenda for you?
Yeah, we gotta amend the agenda for the parks.
Let's go, we have the parks.
And go. Cliff and, Cliff, we're doing parks first.
Let's...
Cliff and...
Wait, 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 wait.
Wait a minute, let's, let's go with Joe first here to see what he wanted done first.
This is just an amendment to the agenda, or addition to the agenda on an alley closing. I mean, didn't make it on the agenda, the paperwork didn't get picked, turned in on time. These people...
We can't, I don't know if they're picking you up on the recording, so.
He wants to amend the agenda to add, and I've got the ordinance right here, 142023, due to having a grandchild 10 days ago, the paperwork didn't get to my desk in time to be on this agenda, so they want to add ordinance 142023 to the agenda.
I'll make a motion that we amend the agenda to add ordinance number 142023.
Second.
The...
Hang on, Anderson?
Yes.
Guston?
Yes.
Plotho?
Yes.
Ramsey?
Yes.
Russell? Sai Dashni?
Yes.
Wolf?
Yes.
No.
It doesn't matter. The plan commission met on Tuesday, and they gave a favorable recommendation of the alley closing between 2:14 East 8th. It didn't get on the agenda, that's my fault, I'm sorry that we had to amend that.
That alley just runs back to the river.
And it's only a small section between the two homes, it's not that complete alley. Utilities just reached out, the street department, and they all...
And Nipco.
Yes, and Nipco, and they all agreed to the closing.
And there are no remonstrators?
Remonstrators. Sorry, I just filled in for a week.
I'll make a motion to adopt ordinance number 142023.
Second. Anderson?
Yes.
Guston?
Yes.
Plotho?
Yes.
Ramsey?
Yes.
Russell? Sai Dashni?
Yes.
Wolf?
Yes.
All right, now, Kathleen?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to put the Parks Board and Gary Golf Course on the agenda to consider... Who are we considering? I'm sorry, my mind is just not, I don't know if I need to do an official...
Oh, I'm sorry.
What do I, I have to do an official, Kurt, do I need to do an official amendment?
You need to, you need to request to change the agenda to add a presentation by Gary for the parks.
Yeah, that's, yeah, so, so I did, just ask for...
Second?
Pardon?
Do I have a second?
Yes.
Thank you.
Anderson?
Yes.
Guston?
Yes.
Plotho?
Yes.
Ramsey? Russell? Sai Dashni?
Yes.
Wolf?
Yes.
Okay, you're up.
Who's gonna come first, both of you come up, or do you wanna? Gary, do you wanna do first?
How we doing?
Good, are you?
Things that must have changed over the weekend, Gary?
Yeah.
Because you, you told, you told me Friday, nothing, so.
So this is our next step, as far as getting...
Gary, make sure you're back.
Yep, yep. So this here, this is from Paul, so this is from, he's, he's with Hydrodesigns, and so this was our next step, as far as, we talked about getting money appropriated out of non-reverting fund to get him here. And I think it's on the... Second? Second page there, Article 3.
You have another one on?
Yeah, I got one. And this, this, this whole packet basically breaks down what, what he's gonna do, you know, from, from time getting here, but the cost that we would be asking for is, is page 2 there, Article 3.
And what this, explain what this is.
And this is to get him down here to, so we can get him down here to walk the course with me and do all the specs and get more, so that way we can come back, then we gotta come back. By that time, I'll bring the design back, and we'll go over that and whatnot, and then they'll send that out to contractors.
And that design, you opened up the bid because it'll be so much money, correct?
How much is the quote, Gary? I have no idea.
Uh, that was what I remember.
$11,650.
I'm sorry?
Yep.
$11,650.
$7,000?
$11.
$12,000. It was about that $12,000, and I think that last month, that was what them guys were, were guessing, I think actually they might have guessed about 15, but...
So you wanna make it 15? Is that what you're telling me?
This, because it, it does say, you know, it could be negotiated, but there's 195, that would be an hour, but that's, that's depending on, you know, this guy does so many courses, he does courses with, you know, 2,000 heads, some with 500, where we're looking at 300, so that, that can always vary, so that might be a good idea there, just make it a flat 15. And then, I don't know, I believe we also wanted to ask about appropriating some money out of that non-reverting fund to purchase sprinkler heads now. I'm in need of them, like, you know, last week, where we were gonna, I brought that quote in, what was it, now, three months ago, remember, but that was for, basically, we were asking for like 40,000, and then we went a different direction and got them guys down here, but I do need some sprinkler heads now. I don't have that itemized just for the sprinkler heads, I can do that, you know, but there, I'm kinda, I got some that are just, just hurting right now that we need to kind of replace, which again, then, you know, we'd be able to tie them into the, down the road if it happens, so.
How many do you need now?
Uh, I was gonna ask about 10,000 worth.
So you're, we're talking about the 15 plus the...
Yeah, which is, you know, gonna get me about 20, 25, 30 sprinkler heads or so.
So with this 15,000, if I understood correctly, if we sign a contract with them and do that, then that fee is added into that or waived, I guess? Was it, we didn't do anything?
Into the total of like, no, no, this would, we would, we take their, care of this now, that's why we were saying, we do have this now in that non-reverting fund to use.
You have, in the, in Fund 2401 Golf Irrigation System, you get $74,000.
Which is that fund that builds every day, every, every golfer, you know, money goes into that fund, so.
And we have spent zero this year.
Do you have the answer for me on how much you're losing in leaks?
I don't, and I don't know how to trace that.
Because I asked that last month, and I'm just really interested in that.
But I mean, I, I'm seeing new leaks every day. There's leaks that we don't see right now, you know, that aren't showing themselves yet until I fix them.
I think if you had those numbers, it would really justify your argument for the new irrigation system, because if you could come back and say, oh my gosh, you know, I'm paying $10,000 a month in leaks, I mean, so if you could get that number, get with Josh, and get that number, I think...
Can we get an exact number, though, Mike?
You can come close, because you know each of the sprinkler heads, they gotta tell you what their gallon requirement and their GPM on, so you ought to be able to say, well, I run each sprinkler head, or I run...
Well, no, we're just talking about the leaks, right? You just wanna know for the leaks.
Yeah, no, but listen, if, if, if you say I run my sprinklers this amount of time each, whatever section, or however you do it, we can figure out how much water you're using and how much water you're losing based on the GPM of the sprinkler head, how long you run it, and then you subtract it from how much, how much overall you're building.
Okay.
What you should be, what you should be using as a pair of...
Compared to what, yeah.
Yeah, it's like water loss versus water use.
Water loss out of the water tower?
I think that could strengthen your argument. I do feel like that could strengthen your argument.
Yeah, yeah, we can definitely get with that, yep.
Can I, excuse me, can you and I and Jason get together and make sure that we have that next, for next city council meeting?
Yeah, absolutely.
Can we put that on all business or for next city council meeting?
We can, I need to do an additional appropriation for next, for next council meeting, and I believe it has to be advertised also, so, but you can run it, you can, you can approve it and get it run through at the July meeting, so that, so that he could tell the guy that it's, it's, that it's on the agenda to be approved...
Yeah.
On the next July meeting, and, and so he wouldn't have any delays.
Doesn't he need approval for this right now?
We're just, we just put him on the agenda, that's all we did to hear, hear what he's presenting. I've got a, since it's an additional appropriation, I've got to advertise it.
Can we get his money for the sprinklers, or that has to wait till...
Well, he can, he can...
That's right, never mind, yes, yeah.
Appropriation, I have to have a hearing, public hearing.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep, so I gotta go by the rules.
Right, and that's fine, but we wanted to...
But at least if he knows it's coming, then it's okay.
Yes.
Did you ever find out about the payment plan with them, far as like what we could do, like a monthly thing to pay that, whatever, $800, $10,000?
That's kind of the next steps until he gets here, and then, and then, and I've got, I brought, what these are is basically that it's their resume, and they've got samples of other golf courses they've did, and I can give you guys copies of these, too, to go through later, but I think this was the, the next step, to get him here, so.
So actually, he hadn't gave you a quote on, an estimate on what's going to cost?
No, not the whole, not the entire system yet.
That's, that's what this is for, is to get the, the person to come walk the, with
Jason and Gary and do the design, and then...
We don't know what we're putting in yet, so.
After the last meeting, I did have somebody that works for the PGA call me, and that, one thing that they suggested is that you do need somebody like this, somebody who's done it before, somebody, I mean, because you said you had it in your head, but they really recommended that you have an expert who's done it before to do it, and they also said that you should plan on adding 20% probably to the estimate that they give you.
Oh, sure, yeah.
Okay.
Yep, and, and their resume, you'll, you'll, you'll be, I think you'll be very impressed with them, so this is what they do, so. Yep, any other questions?
Thanks for providing, I was begging you all week, so I apologize for...
Do you see you guys after the meetings, or you going now?
I'll take mine now.
After the last meeting, or the next day, I called Eric at Baker Tilly to inquire whether the city had bonding availability, and he said yes. He would not have a problem with that. So if he decided to, to do that, issue a bond for the golf course over 10 years or whatever, he, he would not have an issue with that, based on the, based on the cash flow projections. They've changed from the ones we had last year for the positive, so he would not have a problem.
That's good news.
That's good. This is exciting, Gary.
I don't feel like anybody's doing the arrangements for me, though.
Thanks. Cliff?
Basically, the Parks Board wanted me to come to you guys and basically inform you of the condition of the parks restrooms there, except for one in Miami's for it, they're all probably 60-plus years old and rundown and worn out. And for example, like the one in Upper Park, it doesn't even have sinks in it, and none of the old ones are ADA compliant as well. They basically need replaced at some point in the near future.
What do we do?
We've got all kinds of plumbing issues. It's, it's time for them to go.
I was gonna get with you, I just received a phone call the other day about a group through the RDP Board that are looking at, I believe it's like a $2 million grant for parks, and they were talking about restrooms and some stuff for the amphitheater, and I figured getting with you guys to find out like what your needs are, obviously the bathrooms down in Lower Park all need to be replaced, but this grant would cover any park that we have. But this grant would cover any park that we have, but I know that one of their focuses on amphitheater, try to make it more usable, put another concession stand in, lighting and everything, but the restrooms were definitely one of the priorities, so.
Gotcha.
I was gonna get with you, and then that way you can, and I know you've already been talking about this for years of what you would like to do.
Right.
And where you would want them, and what would work and what wouldn't work, so, sound like a conversation that we'll have real soon with them.
Yeah, definitely.
Since I'm gonna be cutting your chat.
Yeah, they're, they're ready to start writing the grant, but I'm like, you might wanna go to Parks Board, because they've already seen the, uh, five-year plan, knowing that there's some of those things already on there, but I think their next step is to present it to the Park Board before they go any further with it.
Awesome.
Well, Carson, you, you said that you had received some information from HWC, would you mind coming up and explaining? Don't go anywhere, Cliff.
HWC is the consulting firm that just finished the Parks Master Plan for the last five, next five years, um, we have reached out to them to see if they would do kind of initial survey of all of our bathrooms specifically, um, they sent over a list just today, we haven't had a chance to go through it yet, but we are looking at a proposal from them just to do a survey and working with Makita and on potentially getting some of that through the Ready 2.0, um, but I know there's a lot of funding opportunities out there, so we'll take it all into consideration.
How, how come Parks didn't ask for any money on the ARP, uh, plan, like, just as perks?
I sent out three emails, and I never got any responses.
I moved the initial round.
Okay.
And then we're talking with Steeler, wanting to look at grants and other things instead of using them.
Okay.
So what is the situation when we have the amphitheater, like, events like, that are coming up Saturday, what, what's, do we have workable bathrooms?
They're functional, they're...
But, I mean, can you wash your hands and...
At the amphitheater, you can, yes, the only one that doesn't have a, doesn't have sinks is the one in Upper Park.
So should we lock that down, because it's...
Put hand sanitizer in there.
Yeah, I guess we could do that.
Put a pump thing on the wall, I mean, that's better than nothing.
Because that could be health code.
Yeah, we'll just do that, yes.
It's even a big, give a big compliment to the Parks Department, I know we've had a lot of negative talk, but the pickleball court is just, is on fire right now, I mean, I, it makes me so happy, I mean, there's a lot of young, uh, college-age kids or high school kids that are playing pickleball at night.
Well, it's, it's packed all day during the weekend.
Yeah, so...
And I did, Cliff, earlier when I was talking about the sand volleyball courts, but I mean, he's the one doing all of the work, I'm just trying to help get some donations and stuff, so.
Everybody says we don't have anything to do here, but, I mean...
Yes.
Pact, so, it's great.
Mr. Ted should be thanked also for the, for the pickleball court, Makita, so, thank you, you too.
Allison, do you, do, is there anything you would like to add?
Um, well, I would...
About pair, please.
Yeah.
Yeah, you need a little more microphone.
Good evening, everyone, I would just like to say that, uh, I think the people of Peru deserve bathrooms of work, they deserve bathrooms that are ADA requirement, meet the requirements, and I think it's about time money was spent fixing them, because they're a disgrace, and to think that people who come into the park in a wheelchair have to go home to use a facility because we don't have them, that to me just seems completely wrong, so I think that if you're willing to help and we can get this done, we can do a really good improvement to a wonderful park, and I believe that is something that needs to be done, and that's what I have to say.
I was just with a, a group of friends before this meeting, and we're, they were discussing, you know, not only do we pay to go to some of the events at the amphitheater, but, you know, they're just not, that hardly being able to use them because of the conditions, so...
But it's part and parcel to the, what's happened, the maintenance has been put off and put off and put off and put off, and it's never been done, Cliff does his best to keep it running, but you can't expect him to replace the Upper Park where there is no sink, where the whole thing has been there for...
How about the golf course art picture I saw from nineteen twenty-seven, some guests in that park was maybe thirties, I'm guessing that ability is original.
So we're talking sixty, seventy, eighty years for a bathroom? That is just a disaster.
Well, and I think that would've been perfect to use for the ARP money, I mean, I think that's what the ARP money is supposed to be for, it's supposed to benefit the entire community, not just city entities, it's supposed to benefit the entire community, so I think that would've been a great use of some of our ARP funds, and I don't know if it's too late, I don't know if you have to wait till midnight around, or if we could do something?
Well, you're getting close to halfway through the summer, or close, you know, so that's why we saved money for next year, so they choose to do that, the new administration, the new council, they'll start, will start early in the year.
But can we, can we appropriate money from the ARP fund, like, still?
I didn't, well, we'd have to do another advertisement, because I already advertised this dollar amount, so it wouldn't be able to, and I, I was trying to save half of it for next year, just to be fair to the incoming council.
Right, and that's, that's, I, but we have to be fair to the people, Peru too, the citizens of Peru who are using these bathrooms, so, I encourage, that's between you guys, if you, if you want to...
Well, I would ask you really to do that.
Let's do that.
To do another appropriation for at least the bathroom that is up on the Upper Park, because it is a, it has no sink.
So, Cliff, can you get, just, just, can you get with Kurt and, and Jim or whoever and get an, an estimation of what that would cost for, before next, within the next couple weeks, Jim, you're dying, you gotta come up here and talk.
Yeah, I am, because, I mean, we just talked, Catherine, we just talked about this today, is on the email, is like Carson said, HWC, who did the Parks Plan, is willing to work with Parks Board to evaluate all the parks and what are the needs, does the bathroom need to be renovated, completely gutted, and, or new bathroom, or all those kind of things, and they will provide cost estimates.
But that's...
I'm, I know you wanna do things now, but if we don't have a budget to go by, you're asking for folks to come up with what's, what's it gonna take, and it's gonna have to be someone that has engineering, utility experience, and those kind of things to come up with that.
Jim, you, you know, I've got a lot of faith and trust in, in the Parks Board and Cliff, and, you know, how, how, no, I understand what you're saying, but, you know, this is what, this is what I'm hearing from the people, is that, you know, if we can't, if we're not taking care of the bathrooms where people can, you know, what are we doing?
So, how much money are you gonna appropriate?
After we know what an estimate is.
Well, let's...
Well, that's where he's gonna get that, so.
That's, yeah.
I think we're, we might be trying to put the cart before the horse here, I think it's a case of, we want you to understand, this has to be done, it isn't really a choice anymore, and with the help of HWC, who can give us a really good survey of what needs to be done, we still then have to get money for a design for engineering, as he said.
Well, see, that's what...
This has to come first, before you even think about asking Cliff, it's not Cliff's fault to this, to design a bathroom.
I understand that, so, but that's what I mean by an estimate, if it's with Jim Ted, working with Makita and HWC, great, but how much longer do we need to wait? I mean, can this be done within the next thirty, sixty days?
They've started communication today, so.
They already know our facilities, they already know our park.
Right.
You know, this is, this is a process, but we just wanted to be on the agenda tonight to tell you that we're working on ways to provide monies alternatively for this to happen, it's gotta be done, there is no choice.
Right, I'm not gonna belabor that anymore.
When is the Ready 2.0 grants coming out, or winter?
Uh, and that's the, the whole part about this, if, because I'm looking at this as being a, a big project, I don't think we're gonna be able to do it for, you know, what the city might have, and some of its funds or those kind of things, so, we might be able to do things immediately, and that's what we should do in this listing, is a priority listing based on immediate need, and most important need, but we're gonna have to have this to go after grant money, uh, and the Ready 2.0, I think, uh, IEDC is, Indiana Economic Development Corporation's talking about coming up here in August or September to do a tour of our region, so they're looking to make an award by the end of this year.
And, you know, we're all on the same side of this, you know, it's just the semantics are a little bit different.
No, I'm just saying we need to have a fairly good estimate, and we need to have documentation, especially if we're going after grand dollars.
I agree.
I think that HWC can tell us there's immediate need, and we can look, does the city have funds to be able to do that immediately, or is it something we're gonna have to go over grant money, but I don't think we can do it tomorrow.
Right, right.
And may I make one last comment, this isn't just about a one bathroom, this is about all.
All system.
The park system, it's about the ones at West City Park, where the kids play, there are issues everywhere that need fixing, and it's not something we do, this is probably going to be very expensive.
Yeah.
But when we haven't done any renovation work for many, many years, you pay the piper, and this is going to what, pay what the piper asks.
Yeah, we keep kicking things down the road, and, thank you, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Jim.
All right, under communication, um, I'd like to bring up to the council to change the July meeting from the third to the tenth, just because it's, Monday's the third, a lot of people are going on vacations, being out of town all weekend and everything, we're closed on the fourth, which is Tuesday, but we're open on the third, I understand that, but I think we would get more participation from the general public if we would move it out a week from the third to the tenth.
I agree.
Because I didn't, I didn't realize when we set this all up, that we were gonna be out on Tuesday, but we do work Monday, so there's gonna be people take Saturday, Sunday, take Monday off, and then Tuesday is a holiday and come back on Wednesday, but if we move it to the tenth, I think we'll get a lot more participation from the public.
That sounds all right.
Will we have the option to, I don't have my calendar with me, will we have the option to Zoom if we can't be here in person since you're switching the day?
Ask Mr. Moon.
The only thing with Zooming, you can't vote or anything.
No, they changed that, they changed that, they changed the law on that, you can vote.
There's some regulations on, as to how many times you can vote electronically.
Right.
But you can participate remotely now, we did pass that ordinance as well, ordinance of resolution, can't remember which one.
We're supposed to be able to Zoom in, but I've requested it once, another time, and I wasn't given it, so I flew back early, but, um, I don't know, is that an option?
I'll try.
Okay.
Who does make it easy, won't have anything to have, has to be voted on?
You're right. I never actually done it, so I don't know.
Well, we probably shouldn't, we probably should figure it out, just in case, since we have the ordinance that says we can do it.
We bought the equipment, it was hooked up, and then that ended up being the end of COVID, we're just not, so, I need to come in and do some testing.
Okay.
I, I have one item that shouldn't take but a minute.
So are we gonna change this from the third to tenth?
Oh, sorry.
I'm for it.
I'm for it.
Yeah.
Do we need to?
I'm for it.
It's good with me.
All right, go ahead.
Um, Dustin, so you, I have this letter in my box, it's not open, as you can see, you made me aware of this letter, um, and I'm going to open it because it's a, currently a city council matter, I just don't know if you're the attorney for this or not.
I'm not.
Well, so, this is from the ACLU, um, regarding Tim Simpkins' Facebook account. Mr. Simpkins, this is to me and Mr. Kern, Mr. Simpkins has contacted me with concerns that Councilwoman Ploto has blocked him from her Facebook page, although it was originally a personal page, is used for public business as an elected official, I am writing to you, to both of you, as I am not sure if Mr. Kern, as city attorney, is deemed to be representing the city councilwoman in this matter, if so, then I will only be able to communicate concerning this matter with Mr. Kern. Have you responded and said that you're not my attorney?
Yes, I have, I have, I have no, the council, individual council member, not an individual base, so.
Although the Supreme Court has recently agreed to review the question, there is a wealth of case law that indicates that a social media account is used by a public official to communicate matters of relevance and interest because of her office, the social media account is a First Amendment forum, in such a situation, at a minimum, speech cannot be prevented because of disagreement with its viewpoint, we have been involved in a number of cases that challenge this viewpoint discrimination, I am hopeful that Mr. Simpkins' ability to make statements on the councilwoman's personal page and view comments can be restored at the earliest opportunity, and I look forward to hearing from the appropriate person about, about this, thank you very much for your consideration in this matter, Kenneth J. Falk. So, I know, Tim, you're here, and I, um, just to let you know, Dustin, that there was a time when I did unblock him and told him that if he, uh, can obey basic community standards of decency and not lying, that I would unblock him and keep him unblocked, since that time, he was malicious and I blocked him again, we're part-time elected officials, and, not that that really matters, but I have a right to come in decency too.
And I, I believe I forwarded you a public access counselor's response that I had to reach out to him and...
Oh, I, I didn't see the response, oh, no, you're right, yes, you're right, yeah.
That, generally speaking, the Indiana Public Access Counselor did say they now completely side with ACLU's stance on this position, however, more often than not, they're more aligned with them, they're closer to being aligned with them in this topic as well.
And so, then should, if this continues, should I get my own attorney, or what do I do?
I do not advise the council.
That's right.
Or private individuals, I do not wanna get into that in public meetings.
Well, that's all I have, unless Mr. Simpkins wants to address this, but, please...
Um, just like to remind everyone, this next weekend is Cole Porter Weekend, some great music downtown, please come down and listen to some great music, you're gonna be in that, aren't you?
Oh, we're gonna play a little bit.
All right.
Also, Patrick Redman, he wanted to thank the community and the city, he still hasn't sent me that email, but, for the help with the Arts Festival, that was a great event, and it was the second year, and there's gonna be another one and another one, so, this, this weekend, this week is gonna be fantastic with the parks.
I, I did wanna say one thing about that.
Okay.
As far as any of that goes, it's gonna be, I'm gonna have to let you deal with the attorney on that.
Okay.
Deal with anything with it.
All right, great, thank you, Tim, I'm done.
I make a long journey, Jerry. Sounds good, a second.
Favor?
Hi.
All right, give a second.